We'll start the June 16th zoning meeting. Seated tonight are our four regular members, myself, David Ruff, Ben Felger, Gardner Young, and Fred Dykman. And then the alternate tonight would be Chuck Sheen. If Lynn comes, then Conway shows up, Chuck will drop in. Minutes?
I approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Any discussions? All of us in favor?
All right. Wait a minute. Whoa, whoa, I have one correction. On page four, the word "not" is missing from the second line. They will not.
Make a motion to approve with the one correction on page four.
Yeah, I would second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, I have. Keith?
Sure, so moving to the administrative review items. Item 4D1 is a commission interpretation regarding modification of existing retaining wall and building setbacks. 104 Noise App, or its point, assessors map 129, block eight, lot one, zone RM20. Continuation of discussion from the last meeting about whether the modification of their retaining walls at this house basically can be approved with the zoning regulations. So we're looking for the commission's interpretation about that. Modification of the existing retaining walls constructed in 1990. The two concrete walls, they're offset terrace from each other with the patio area above. The walls are currently failing and need a replacement. So the owners are looking to merge the walls together, which would create some additional patio space. The wall wouldn't be any higher and wouldn't, and mostly would not extend any further towards the street. There is one area in the southeast corner where the owners proposed that the wall would extend further towards the neighboring property line. Remain out of the FEMA V-zone. At the last meeting, the commission directed the department to develop a reg amendment, a zoning regulation amendment, to clarify the issue of retaining walls over three feet in building setbacks. The details haven't been established yet, and this amendment hasn't been submitted. So we still have to come up with a good rule to deal with this because the regulations don't offer much guidance, and the public hearing for that wouldn't be for at least a couple of months. So the owners here are looking for guidance, and we kick this up to the commission because the rules are pretty unclear. Just as a background, this came up in a previous application where it's been the town's interpretation that retaining walls of over three feet aren't allowed in the building setbacks. And that was upheld somewhat in a recent application, the AG Trust application at the corner of Harry Austin Drive and Mason's Island Road. So since the last meeting, per the commission's request, the applicants have provided renderings of what the wall would look like and also a site plan showing where it is. So in the staff report, they have renderings of what the wall looks like. The renderings, I'm not sure they show the full extent of it in the corner that sticks out more. If you look at the proposed site plans, the retaining wall does go a bit further than it is now to the, I guess it's northeast to the, to the house next door. You know, in this case, it looks like the possible interpretations are, number one, to allow the proposed modifications; number two, to only allow the modifications involving the existing retaining wall locations without their expansion to the northeast; and number three, to not allow the modifications, at this time, at least until a potential regulation amendment is approved that clarifies this issue some more.
What's the feeling of the members on this one?
I have a couple of questions. Do we know why the current regs do not allow retaining walls in the setback? What was the reasoning behind that?
You know, that's been our interpretation for the past few years based upon the language in there. Has never been a clear-cut thing, where the commission has never quite come out and said that or written it in its regulation.
Okay, okay. Is there any, is there any, can you tell from the drawings, any impact on sightlines for motorists or pedestrians by extending the wall?
No, it doesn't look like it would interfere with the visibility on the corner there.
If I may speak, I've visited twice now the site, and the actual proposed wall is going to look a lot nicer than what's there now. It will not infringe on anybody's sight views. I'm a little concerned about the expansion, but I think it's particularly in the setback, isn't it Keith? It just nibbles a corner.
Do any, do any of the neighbors object to the expansion?
You know, I have heard from Fonnie Burr, who was concerned about it. Who, you know, wanted to remain on this. To answer the question, there's, I have heard some concern about it.
Well Keith, do we, do we know what the nature of the structural issues are with the wall? Is it, is it something where structural failure is imminent?
Mr. Zerbe, he can probably answer that better than I. I mean, there are visible cracks in the wall.
Hello Keith, I'm, I'm here. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, there are visible cracks in the wall right now, and I had two people come and look at it. One was a concrete contractor, and he had recommended the proposal that I've also sent from the structural engineer Jay Williamson from Jawa LLC. And even Jawa said that if nothing is done, it's going to be a bigger problem than exists today. And that southeast corner, just so that, the rendering that was sent does show the nibble corner, the nibble corner. So it's not, it's not a pointed corner. It comes over to the existing length on the street side, and it cuts in on an angle on the AE zone, and then it lines up directly with the existing property curbing wall, which is currently being replaced because that was failing. So that wooden timber wall is currently under construction now, which is well under three feet, and that is going to be a decorative block wall that you see, landscaping wall. And the reason why that southeast corner is so important is because the failure on the corner, if you recall Keith, when you were at the site, I pointed that corner to you that the concrete had separated. So the reason for the expansion is to encase that whole corner of the existing structure as it sits today to firm up that whole area.
Do you have anything in writing from the structural engineers to his assessment of it?
As far as an assessment, no, other than his drawings to show how it would be built.
Those are very helpful, thank you. Just a couple of quick questions. You said it's cracked, is it, is it tilting at all out of plum?
The corner, the corner is currently tilting toward the neighbor's property, and I don't want that to fall over.
Okay. Thank you. That concludes my questions, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes Fred? Are we stuck?
I, I hear you, Mr. Chairman.
I can hear you.
We, we hear you.
Okay. Did you say something Fred?
No, no, I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, this is Chuck. My, my feelings, you asked what the commission's feelings were on this. This is a situation where there is an existing retaining wall that's been there for some time. It's, it's, I'm not going to say it's unsightly, but it's not, it's not as good-looking as the wall that's going to be, going to be erected there according to the plans. And the proposal is an improvement to correct a structural deficiency. So I'm inclined, since the regulation is as nebulous as it is, to, to allow this in this situation because it is, I realize that non-conformities will be increased slightly, but it's almost like a non-conforming situation. The wall already exists, and it's in the vicinity of a flood zone, it's in the vicinity of a scrape. It's my feeling that we should allow the owners to proceed.
Oh, great.
This is Ben. Do we need to decide on the shape of it though Keith? The original shape or the new proposed shape?
I think that would be part of the decision, you know, where they're also to allow that coming to the more northeast section of the property.
Southeast.
Southeast.
Can we curve that corner?
That, that corner is act, if you can look at the 3D rendering with the stone veneer, you will see that there, that it is on an angle. It is not coming to a straight point. It's, the, the existing is a straight angle. The proposed, you'll see, if you look at the top drawing of the proposed, you'll see that there's an angle there. You can also see it by the floor, excuse me, by the site plan of the retaining wall. So you'll see that it is angled in, and then it will be a direct straight line which will tie into the new block wall.
See that?
Any other discussion on this application?
So, Mr. Zerbe, in that new area, is the wall over three feet tall?
In, in the actual new area? No, I'm going to say no because it, it goes up on the ledge. You'll see by the site plan where that ledge actually comes in, so that would be lower than three feet, or maybe three feet, 35 inches, something like that, but it would not be as high as the other wall.
Okay. And for the commission's benefit, at the last meeting, we talked about whether this would need a CAM application that would go back to the commission. I reached out to DEP for that answer and haven't heard back from them yet, so I'm still not sure about that.
Well, when the existing wall was built, all that was taken into consideration, which allowed the wall to be built. And I know that our engineers at that time had done whatever they needed to do to get the proper approvals at that point, and this wall is not coming out any further. So I certainly understand you need to do what you need to do, but it is an existing wall, and it's not going to come out any further to the wall.
Any other questions? What's the pleasure of the commission?
It suggests we allow it to go ahead.
I'm good with it.
I agree.
I, I'm good with it also, Mr. Chairman, as, as proposed.
Shall we make that a motion?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Any more discussion? All of us in favor?
All right.
Aye. Aye. Thank you. Keith?
Well, item five.
Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Mr. Lynn, before you go on to the next item, could I ask everyone who is not speaking to mute?
Oh, Lynn is here.
Yeah, Lynn, put your camera on.
Lynn.
I've been here, okay, thank you.
I haven't seen you.
Really? Because I'm, I'm conceived, I think.
You weren't on, we didn't know you were here, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's all right, no problem. Yeah, if you could just use your mic, that would be great, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, with my motion out of order?
No.
Okay.
Next item Keith?
Sure, so are we, are we seating Ms. Conway?
Yeah, we're seating Ms. Conway in place of Mr. Sheen, who is, all five regular members are now aboard.
Okay.
I think that Zeverini wants to say goodbye, right? I think the way that.
Hi, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next item is item 4D2, 20101ZON Aquarium Water, tie-in bond, zoning permit application for stream flow release and tube settlers project, including construction of one-story PAC, powder-activated carbon building, relocation of existing 340 square foot shed and related site improvements, property located at Dean's Mill Water Treatment Plant, 349 Mistoxid Ave, Mystic, assessors map 133, block one, lot two, zone GBR 130. In this case, Aquarium Water is seeking approval for modifications to the Dean's Mill Water Treatment Facility. So those modifications include this new proposed PAC or powder-activated carbon building behind the main office building. It's about 520 square feet, single-story, 25 feet tall, mostly hidden from public view in back of the brick building there. There's new covers on the existing sedimentation basins, which you really can't see, and relocation of the 340 square foot, give or take, shed behind the main building to the west side of the channeled waterway, about 95 feet back from Jerry Brown Road. The changes conform to the bulk requirements of the GBR 130 zone. Water quality restoration activities like this are allowed in the GBR 130's non-infringement area. So although your average person can't put a shed there or something like that, the water company can do something like this that benefits public water supply. In the water supply systems, they're exempt from inland wetlands review per state statute, so it didn't have to go to our wetlands commission. We got comments from the old Mystic Fire Department that they, they didn't have any issues with this. There's no other issues from our end here.
Does anyone have any questions on this application?
No.
This is Ben. No, I think it's fine by me.
Looks good to me.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Lynn, I make a motion to approve the application.
Second.
Any more discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
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 You?
Okay. Item 4D3, 20102ZON Rocks Realty LLC, Kenneth Baldwin, zoning permit application for construction of a 29 foot 6 inch by 11 foot 6 inch Verizon Wireless Equipment Shelter, generator and 1,000 gallon propane tank with underground fiber line and associated improvements, property located at 12 Coogan Boulevard, assessors map 164, block four, lot one, zone TC80. This application, Verizon's looking to build the centralized radio area network hub facility, basically an equipment shelter to house wireless radio, electronic equipment, an exterior generator, and 1,000 gallon propane tank. New fiber lines will also be installed from Village Farm east to Clara Drive. This will be located near the southeast, southwest corner of the Mystic Factory Outlet Site at 12 Coogan Boulevard off Village Farm Road. This application received a variance from the zoning board of appeals to reduce the front yard setback from 50 to 22 and a half feet due to the site's location within 100 feet of inland wetlands. They also were granted inland wetlands approval on May 7th with the stipulation that staff shall be notified to inspect erosion and sedimentation control measures. So with the front setback variance, the application conforms to the bulk and use requirements of the TC80 zone. And there's a plan here in the staff report.
This is right behind McQuaid's, isn't it?
It is, right.
This is Ben. I have a question Keith, and the proposal mentions a small retaining wall. The retaining walls are coming to haunt us this past month and a half. Is there a height on that? Just sorry, we can be consistent with our inconsistencies? I couldn't see a dimension.
There is, I can't make it out on this plan. Let me see if I can make it out on here.
Is it, is it internal to the site? In other, in other words, to keep McQuaid's from sliding down the hill rather than, rather than something that you would view from the street?
I'll have to see here.
Keith, if I, if I could help?
Oh, sure.
This, this is Ken Baldwin with Robinson &amp; Cole for Verizon Wireless. On sheet C3 of the plans that were submitted, if you see along the right side of that drawing, there is a notation, it's small, but it says three-foot max retaining wall. So at its highest point, the retaining wall is three feet. And then the grade actually goes up from that retaining wall toward Village Farm Road. So the retaining wall itself won't be sticking out, won't be in view from Village Farm Road at all. It actually is just helping to provide a little bit more room on that west side of the shelter for the generator, and then the, the entire facility would be enclosed by a fence as well.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
As in the, one of the last applications, staying under three feet with the retaining wall keeps you out of trouble.
What sort of, is there security concerns there, and what sort of protection is there for that propane tank, which appears on the plans to be right next to the parking area?
There, there are, there are bollards that are installed to avoid any cars from being able to access the area where the tank is. As far as security goes, there are silent intrusion alarms associated with the equipment shelter itself. They are designed, all of these security systems are monitored remotely by Verizon Wireless back at its switch. These are unstaffed facilities, so we don't have to send anybody out, any technicians out to the site very often. But any attempts to access the building or any attempts to tamper with the, the tank itself would set off an alarm that would be, provide notification back to the switch.
Thank you. Any other questions? Turn your motion.
Make a, make a motion to approve this application as presented?
Second.
Any more discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You around Lynn?
It looks like Lynn is muted, and when I tried to unmute her.
That's because I'm unmuting myself Keith.
Okay.
Override there, I think.
As long as, as long as I'm not muting you by accident.
No, 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 and I, I said yes, I agree.
Okay.
Yep.
Prove.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item is 4D4, 20107ZON Horses Healing Humans, Jeremy Ostrow. They've requested that this, this application be tabled until the next meeting.
Okay.
That's fine.
And no motion required there. The next application is item 4D5, 20116ZON Martin De Jong, zoning permit application for proposed wooden boardwalk access to dock, property located at 228 Wompasak Road, Stonington, assessors map 127, block 16, lot 4A, zone RC120. The applicant here was recently approved for construction of a dock by DEP. So the current application before you is to construct elevated boardwalk in the upland area in order to access the dock from the existing house. The RC120 zone does have a non-infringement area of 100 feet from tidal wetlands, in which usually no development or disturbance can occur. However, per the definition of non-infringement area in section 1.2.2, the commission can approve disturbance related to boat access so people can get to the water. And there's the site plan showing where this is in the report. Their, their engineer, Mr. Shirenzia, is here if there are any specific questions for him.
This is Ben. I do have a question. How much will be in the upland area? How many pilings? Well, not pilings, but footings. I couldn't quite tell on the drawing, it was tiny.
Keith, am I unmuted?
Yeah, you're on it.
Oh, yes, we hear you.
Okay, great. I have not calculated how many are in there, but we're looking at about a, I would say about 160 feet of boardwalk, and they're about eight-foot offset. So if I do the quick math, I think it's about 20.
This is Ben again, before you get to be over the water?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's 100, 160 feet from the, from the location of the drive where, where they would access. And to get down to the approved dock location, 160 feet, we're proposing the footings every eight feet. So you would see one, you'd see 20 of them in that area.
And what would happen if you were to reduce the number of the boardwalk in length? Would it, would it be a gravel path or just weeds or?
If we were to reduce it in length, then yes, it would, it would have to be some sort of gravel path, although we feel that a raised boardwalk is environmentally better. We won't have to disturb as much of the, the more or less natural pathway in that area, let things grow around it, grow under it. There'll be water penetration, go through the boardwalk, and it will just be maintained around it. We're trying to be, this is an effort to make less disturbance and not more, but also there's a lot of, it's a very rocky terrain through there. So we were also concerned with if we're having to bring in gravel fill, having to maybe remove, you know, large rock that could be icebergs and be larger rock below and cause more disturbance. So we'd rather just, you know, hopefully keep these, these pilings very simple, either drilled or excavated, just with an auger right in place, and do the minimal disturbance possible, and then let it revegetate around the boardwalk. and do the minimal disturbance possible and then let it re-vegetate around the boardwalk.
Thank you.
Any question, any other questions? Or hear a motion on this application?
Make a motion to approve the application.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Lynn, where are you? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both.
Thank you.
It says here on the agenda, the commission will not discuss the merits of the petition at this meeting. So we've been notified by the Connecticut Siding Council that Green Skies Clear Energy is proposing basically a solar, solar panels on part of Elm Ridge Golf Course. So this is not in the jurisdiction of the town, really. It's in the jurisdiction of the Connecticut Siding Council who approves these energy facilities. The town, either the commission or the Board of Selectment or both, can comment to the siding council. Comments, written comments have to be in by July 4th. So there's not too much time there. This has not been fully reviewed by us or our consultant. We've shipped it to our engineering consultant for their review also. So basically, it's on your agenda to see what you want to do with this. There's one PCC meeting before July 4th, which is our special one on June 30th. You know, whether you want to hear a presentation from the applicants on this, which is what the commission did on a previous one a few months ago off Tagwank Road. Let's see.
Keith, the, the commission has no jurisdiction, so even if a presentation was given other than an information pass, we really don't influence this one way or the other. Is that correct?
That's right. Although you could offer comments to the state siding council if there are any concerns or if you're just in support of it.
Keith, this is, this is Fred. The problems we've heard with these solar farms in the past and it have to do with a couple of things. One is whether the neighbors object. Two is because you have to clear cut a site to install a solar farm, there's a problem, there are, there can be problems with runoff and that sort of thing. Are, are we satisfied that those potential objections have been met?
Well, the plan isn't fully reviewed by us, but in general, compared to other sites, it's a golf course where there's not a lot of tree clearing and grading compared to other locations out there. There is some community opposition to it. Just so you know, there are some neighbors who who aren't fond of the idea.
On what basis? Just don't like the looks of it or is there, is there a reason beyond that?
You know, from what I understand, it's, you know, concerns about groundwater, the appearance of it. I might be leaving something else out. Now, owners, I mean, neighbors can also let their comments be known to the siding council. And there's a process for doing that. The siding council process is, you know, it's a lot more formal than this. You have to register with them. It's almost like a mini trial when these things go before the siding council. So there's a lot more sort of organization and work that has to be done if you're going to work against something with the siding council.
I have a question. Are they reducing the number of holes or are they actually going to be clearing land?
They are going to be reducing the number of holes.
I see. Thank you.
Can we wait to the next meeting, Keith, to wait to get the report from the engineer?
Yeah, we don't have any comments from the engineer yet. You know, one of the decisions that wouldn't have to be made is if you're going to talk about this at the next meeting, will you hear public comment then also?
Can we?
Well, I, I think you can. You know, of course, you're not issuing a permit. You're just possibly offering comments to the state siding council.
So, so Keith, at a, at a minimum, would it be up to the town of Stonington to pass along any objections, observations, and so forth from the neighbors? I mean, it would seem to me that we could, we could do that and, and and let it go at that, right? After, I mean, after we hear from the engineer and so.
We could, right.
What are the selectmen's views on this?
I think they're in the same boat. You know, they're, you know, they've, they've heard from some residents who are concerned about it. I think they're considering what to do with it, whether to discuss this some more at one of their meetings. But the process doesn't leave much time. Okay. Where they've given the town only to July 4th.
Maybe we.
The comments.
Or you might, you might extend it. Can we get together, I'll talk together with the selectmen and see what their feelings is on that. The town response, I think it comes from the selectmen's office. I hate to pass it down the road, but I think that's probably where it belongs.
Yeah, you know, they, they notify both the selectmen and the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Maybe the, this is Lynn. Maybe the benefit, as Fred stated, of having a discussion at the June 30th meeting is that it's a meeting that's published. It's within the short timeframe that's allowed and it would be a mechanism for public to comment and, you know, be heard. And it's already scheduled, so maybe that's another thing to consider.
So what is the feeling of the commission at this present time? What we should do?
Well, I, I guess I'd like to hear more about it if we have the opportunity from the engineers.
Yeah, I, I'd like to hear from the engineer too. I mean, I'm, you know, this is above my.
Chuck, are you there?
Yep, I'm, I'm here, Mr. Chairman. Go ahead. I didn't, you sort of broke up there.
Have you dealt with one of these?
Yes, I've, I've dealt with the siding council exclusively and, and I, I've also had very good luck with them. In Suffield, we had a large solar array. The abutting neighbors did not like it. And we were able to get some visual mitigation and get them, get them to rearrange the site. So the siding council was very responsive to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We also got them to, as Fred, I think, said, the, there were some drainage issues associated with it. So, so we got them to deal with the drainage as well, but, but the siding council was very responsive to our memo, which articulated all of those issues and passed them off.
Thank you. So let's, let's continue until the next meeting. And maybe we'll ask you for more advice between now and then, Chuck. Tell us where to go. If you could work, help Keith out on it, if you, how your success was with them.
No, no problem. No problem. I maybe can help him with the, with the summary that, that gets written up and sent along. I'm happy to do that.
Any questions on this discussion? Keith, next item? You're done with that?
The next item, item 6A, under Old Business, PZ2006SDNGPP. This is D6 Realty LLC. Same division and groundwater protection permit applications for free split and subdivision of a 1.13 acre lot. Free country lane, Pawtucket, Assessors Map, 21, Block 1, Lot 3, Zone RE20. Well, after that long introduction, this is recommending tabling in this until the next meeting. We're just waiting for our engineering consultant's review here.
Now we'll move on to the public hearing.
That's right.
Ben?
Yes. First, I went to the General Statutes of the State of Connecticut, Revision of 1958, and all amendments thereto. And first went to the zoning regulations for the town of Stonington, Connecticut. The Planning and Zoning Commission hereby gives notice that it will hold a virtual public hearing on Tuesday, June 16th at 7:00 PM by virtual meeting on the following applications. The first one up, PZ2004SPA and GPP at 1189 Pequot Trail LLC. Site plan and groundwater protection applications for implementation of approved master plan for activities, events, house renovation, and construction of an 80 foot by 30 foot equipment storage building. Property located at 118 Pequot Trail, Stonington. Assessors Map 135, Block 2, Lot 1, Zone AHD-2.
I think it's 1189. Is that correct?
Yes. Oh, 1189, yes.
Seated tonight's application by the five regular members. The way the public hearing works, if you don't know, we'll hear from the applicant, then we'll hear from everyone in favor. Then we're here for anyone opposed to the application. And then we'll have any general comments. And we have a right to rebuttal. In the end, then, the latter will give us his remarks. Mr. Blatty?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Good evening and good. I've got all the documents. I can share them, or I believe you have them all in front of you as far as the site plan and all. So that's, that's there in front of you. And the site plan is the same site plan that we submitted originally for the Part 1 of the zone change, which you approved. The only addition to the site plan from the original one that I, that was approved is I wanted to build an equipment shed in the back of the building for the tractor and the arena groomer and, and all kinds of equipment. So that's, that's the only change to the site plan from what we had proposed originally. And then on that approval, they also asked me to work with the state of the archaeologistology. And they came up here and they wanted to identify where the cemeteries that were possibly located on the property. They did identify where the small houses. If you can see it on the plan, there's a small house with a stone structure around it. That's where the original cemetery was. I did speak to RB Jones, who actually lived up here. He was the son of the owner. And he said that was decommissioned as a cemetery back in the 30s or 40s. And actually, the, that it was exhumed, I believe, and, and there's no, the house was built there. So there is no cemetery there any longer. And you can read the archaeologist's letter from the State of Connecticut confirming that, that, that there, that there's nothing there for that site. The second one, they, they, they looked at, and the archaeologist identifies in his letter and also said there's no evidence of it being there any longer. And actually, it's on the property. Not when they did the split, it ended up on their property, not on mine. So I did work with them and, and I did submit his letter with the Yukon archaeologist that you have a copy of there. So that's that. And then we were also asked by, by Keith to, when we put this application in for the site plan review, he said, you should put in a, an application for the groundwater protection. So I did fill out an application for the groundwater protection permit. So tonight I was asking for the groundwater protection permit as well. I do have a letter here from the aquarium water. Actually, it's an email. And basically saying that he's, they stop up here, aquarium does, and, and checks all the time and make sure we're, we're being a good neighbor. And he says, everything looks good to you and you have a beautiful facility. Thanks for being a good watershed neighborhood, neighbor. So I do have a, an email from him. It says more than that, but I summarized. You want me to read the whole thing? I can, Mr. Chairman?
That's fine.
Fine?
Yeah, we don't need, is it in the record, Keith? We have a copy of it?
I don't believe I do. I think it came in afterwards. I think he.
What's the commission's members like? Do you want to hear the whole letter?
No, thank you.
No, just to think he get a copy to Keith so they could have it on the record.
Absolutely. Thank you. So that's basically all I have, I think. And if you have any questions, I do have Chris Cody here and I have Pete Gardner here, an engineer, and my wife Deb. Any questions? Right at the farm.
This is Ben Philbrick. I do have numerous questions.
Yes, sir.
There are no elevations on your new building, so there are no doors or windows?
Yes, there will, there will be doors and, there will be doors and windows. I, that was just a sketch I had. I haven't really designed the building. I was just talking to Keith about it and he says, well, put it on your plan and, and ask for it in, in there because it'll, it'll be part of the site plan. So I did, and I didn't put the doors and windows on it. It's just going to be a dry building for storage, so it's not going to be any, any toiletries or.
What kind of siding will be on it?
I imagine I'll match the barn. Do, the, the barn is made of metal siding, so I imagine I'll match the barn. It's blue and white.
Okay. And then I did have some other questions about activities. There will be outside music, outdoor music?
Yes, in the last meeting, it came up and it said amplified music shall be limited to no later than 10:00 PM and then all attention on by 11:00 PM.
Right. And you know where that will be set up? Do you have like a band stand idea?
Well, for, it depends on which event we have. Some of them will be inside the indoor arena, which, which is here, and some will be up at the house. There's some fields up by the house that will probably lend itself to having tents and weddings up there.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions at this time?
Mr. Chairman, just a, just a quick question for Keith. Did we get an engineering on this at all?
Keith, you with us?
No, sorry, I was muted. But was the question, was there an engineering review?
Was there an engineering report on this?
There was not because of the minimal physical changes.
Okay, so we're not concerned about what happens to roof drainage or anything like that, really, here?
My thought was because the new building is so small and compared to the large size of the site. But we didn't send it to the engineer for review.
I, I don't see a concern. I just, if there was an engineering report, and I don't, I think you're correct in your assumption. I, I think that the site is so large that, that there's plenty of opportunity for the water to. I, I think that the site is so large that that there's plenty of opportunity for the water to infiltrate. So uh, so if there is no report, that's fine, I I don't think there should be, thank you.
Any other questions at this time? Anyone else like?
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I can just um, sort of summarize a few things here for those who might be unfamiliar with this process. The applicants are applying under the agricultural heritage district, which is a floating zone that the town has. A floating zone, meaning um, the zone is established by approval of a master, a more general master plan. Uh, this was approved last fall for for this property. Um, then the regulations require that they come back for a more detailed site plan, which is what they're doing now. Um, in this case, there's not much of a difference between the site plan and master plan because they're not, other than this uh, new barn, they're not constructing much. Um, so it's approved in two steps, like I said, the master plan and the site plan, which they're doing, which they're doing now. Um, so, you know, the the agricultural heritage district does allow for more flexibility than does a typical zone. Um, the commission established the basic parameters during the master plan review, so. I think I'll stop there, I just wanted to explain sort of the basics of the zone for uh, we won on, went on to hear from the public comment.
Does anyone else like to speak in favor of this application?
Uh, yes, I would, this is Shelley Mancini, um, and I speak in favor of it.
Could I have your address, please?
Yes, seventy one Langworthy Avenue, Stonington, Connecticut, zero six three seven.
Go ahead.
Oh, I just, I just want to, I I just want to convey my support of the plan. Um, and the exceptional job that the Valentes have done to date with the property. Um, their conscientiousness about the environment, uh, the neighbors, uh, the historical integrity of the property. Um, the land management, uh, it's been exceptional, um, and I'm am fully in favor of it.
Thank you. Is anyone else like to speak in favor?
I would like to speak in favor.
Please, it's up.
Bill Middleton, one zero three four P Quat Trail.
Thank you.
Um, as a former resident of the property and someone who got married there, I think this really lends a great use to an old farm. Uh, and we should really all thank Rob and Debbie for uh, having sunk their resources into this that I think few others uh, would have to save really such a unique and historic property.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else?
I would like to, I'm, this is Peggy Roberts. Um, I'm with the Greater Mystic Chamber of Commerce and I'm also a resident at eleven Joy Avenue, Stonington.
Thank you.
Just like to say that we're fully in support of this project and have been all along. It's, I've been there myself and it's just a beautiful um, use of that historic property. And I think that that the owners have been more than responsible in all of the construction they've done and all the planning they've done uh, to that property. So yes, we're we're fully in favor of it.
Thank you. Anyone?
Yes, hi, Steve Cohen, Fourth Fallon Road in Park. And I just want to echo the comments that have made, the property looks beautiful. It's a labor of love for the Valentes and it really uh, is an asset to the community. So they've done a remarkable job and I fully support this proposal.
Thank you.
Maureen Fitzgerald, president of the Ocean Communitywide on Harry Austin Drive in Mystic. I have personally toured the facility and wonderful job that Debbie and Rob have done to enhance the facility. We look forward to doing some programming with them and in full support of the project as well.
Thank you.
I'd like to support the project as well. My name's Lisa Kinnicky, I'm president of the Ocean Community Chamber of Commerce, also Stonington resident at fifteen Renee Drive. And in both capacities, I'm here to enthusiastically support the application. And as a sidebar, my incoming board chairman is very much looking forward to holding her October second, twenty twenty one wedding on the property.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd like to show my support for the project as well, this is Phil Monte of one sixty two Nautilus Way. Um, I've been to the property uh, over the past few months, it's extremely well kept, well cleaned. Um, all the, you know, waste from the animals is is taken care of and I don't think there's any concerns with wastewater, I know because that's part of the the application. Um, and I just, you know, very happy with what the Valentes have done there. And it's, uh, you know, also helped my children to really kind of appreciate the area and the land and the animals that they all have on their property.
Thank you.
So if anyone does want to speak, um, just make sure you unmute yourself. If your microphone is red with a line through it, you're muted, and you have to click it to unmute yourself.
Is there anyone opposed to this application? Once again, is anyone opposed to this application? Any general comments on this application? Let's call in. Hearing none? Keith?
Sure, um, so the master plan for this was approved back in the fall. So of course, we're looking now at the site plan approval and the groundwater protection permit. Um, we sent this out for comments, got some comments from Aquarian Water Company back in March. Um, their representative basically said that, um, let's see. They need to show that proper storage and disposal practices will be followed for the horse farm part of it. Um. And he lists a bunch of best management practices regarding the use of portable hobbies and um, keeping horses there. So. Because of that, I um, had a recommended stipulation that location of portable toilets. For events and proper waste disposal practices for the horse farm, shall be reviewed to the satisfaction of Aquarian Water. Um, just to make sure there's no outstanding issues there. Um, while I'm on the recommended stipulations, I also had a number two, that the site driveway shall be maintained to ensure that emergency vehicles inadequately access the property. Um, this was something that came out of the Old Mystic Fire District's comments of March seventeenth. Um. And he was also looking for some more detail in his comments that can be provided uh, um, after this commission's approval. Uh, the police commission reviewed this from a safety point of view. Um, they didn't see any negative impact on traffic, parking or public safety. Um, those were the only comments we got. Uh, we also did get a letter of support from a resident. Oh, this was actually Cecilia Mancini, who actually spoke tonight, she submitted a letter in favor here. Uh, one of the things the commission might want to think about memorializing the stipulation if you're to approve this is where the outdoor music can occur. Um, so maybe putting that in writing might be helpful, just um, so the outdoor music stays in the geographic location where you want it to stay. Um, so the decisions here by the commission, it's a decision on the groundwater protection permit and a decision on the site plan application. Um, and if this is approved, their next step will just be to apply for an in-house zoning permit from our office, which is just sort of like a uh, check the boxes administrative type approval to make sure all the stipulations have been met. And then they can operate as uh, as was advertised to you here. And build a new uh, build a new structure.
Keith, do you have any suggestions as to how to locate or or box in the the site of music? Bands, that sort of thing?
Uh, you know, Mr. Valenti had a uh, suggestion about where it could occur. Um, you might be able to best explain it. You know, I was thinking something just to keep away from a certain distance from the property line, property lines with the live music. Um, you know, at least three hundred feet should should work.
Any other questions at this time?
Yes, this is, this is Ben again, um, Philbrick. Could the music be situated to be five hundred feet away? Because I thought it's been one part, you have five hundred feet of woods between you and the nearest neighbor?
No.
Really narrow. That would be inside the.
That work?
Inside the right.
Yeah.
That work?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Five hundred feet work?
No, uh, five hundred feet will not work. I know, I'm sorry, I knew you were talking to me, I thought you were talking amongst yourselves.
I'm talking.
Five hundred feet will not work, that narrows the, I got seventy eight acres up here, it narrows it down to.
Tiny little square.
Yeah, it it even cuts off part of the uh, this is Richard Cody, that even cuts off part of the original five hundred feet, even three hundred feet.
Feet work?
I would say two hundred would, two hundred would work.
So, but we're talking, this is Lynn.
Yeah.
Talking about where the music can be situated, not the event.
Yeah, that's true.
The actual, you know.
Okay, I saw, I hear you Lynn, I heard you say, so so three hundred feet would work then?
Okay.
Yes, three hundred feet would work.
Uh, well, can you, this is Lynn again, um, I, I'm not quite understanding why five hundred wouldn't work because it's wooded. So you're not, you know what I mean? Can you explain that a little bit more?
Go ahead, you.
I, I'm sorry.
She said why would five hundred feet work?
Because it's wood.
This is Peter Gardner, Lancer Bear. When we, I could draw on the lines on the plan as as discussions taking place. And when we take, as Rob said, we have seventy seven acres here, when we put a five hundred foot setback in, it it restricts us to a area about an acre and a half to two acres on the seventy seven acre site. And that, that doesn't even include the whole arena, portions of the arena within are within five hundred feet of the property line.
And when I originally brought this up, my, my thought was just keeping a certain distance away from residential properties and not the aquarium land.
It's a half a mile.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, just a experience that I've had with this, um, I I, when I built Rensler, uh, I was with the state of Connecticut. And one of the first things we did was, we had a, we had a rock concert in the football stadium. And uh, the immediate, the immediate neighbors didn't hear a thing. But the inversion was very low on that night and the, and the residents in Glastonbury heard it. So it isn't always the distance away from the property line that that the sound is emanating from. It's setting up the system so that it's it's directed. So you're almost, you're almost better off getting cooperation from the owner that that uh, speakers will be directed and and the system will be set up. So as not to cause an impact at the property line. Uh, and the distance is, the distance is important, it's a factor, but it's not as important as the system that's utilized and the direction of the speakers.
Thank you, Chuck.
This is Ben again, I agree Chuck, I think if we could say have any uh, platforms or speakers pointing, I guess would be east towards the aquarium. Or south towards ninety five, right?
Yeah.
Actually, Ben, that that's, that's more important, that's more important than the offset from the property line. Uh, and other factors will come into play, but but, you know, if if the owner makes a commitment that that they'll work with the town. Uh, so that that the system directs noise away from the property line, there's effective solutions that the sound people can can utilize. And, and you know, they they can design a system almost just for this this site. And uh, it's more important than the offset.
We should have the residential property line, because to the east is nothing but woods and the watershed, I believe.
Right, that's why your suggestion is so good, that that, you know, it, the sound system faces that direction, correct?
Is that workable, Mr. Valenti?
Uh, Peter Gardner, Lancer Bear, yeah, yes, as as was noted, east of us is the Aquarian Water Company, but also due south of us is Aquarian. The residential properties are are to our west. So that would work, so that would work.
That work?
Yeah.
As long as it's not pointing to us.
So do we want to, do, does Mr. Valenti want to take the expertise, suggest wording or?
I, um, I guess the, the amplified music will be.
Directed away from.
Directed away from, will be directed what?
No, toward.
Towards.
Toward.
The.
East.
East.
East and south.
East and south.
Yeah.
Directions on the property.
So all, so all amplification equipment. Yeah, the amplification, so I guess you phrase it in terms of the elect, the electronic amplification system will be directed to produce its sound in those directions. I suppose that's possible.
I would just, I would just add, if possible, so as to minimize the impact along the adjacent residential property boundaries.
That's fine.
That's fine.
Can we also, Bob, delay two hundred feet? I think that's what you found acceptable as well.
I don't think we would need that now because you're, we're pointing the direction.
Well, as Chuck said, it's not, it's one of the factors. You know, it's a combination of a lot of different things, but you know, I think we went from five hundred to three hundred and I think he suggested.
Two hundred. So two hundred is okay?
Two hundred is fine.
Okay, so two hundred is okay, yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry, could I, could I just get a comment? I'm not sure, I heard Keith accurately on the suggestion for a condition with respect to the aquarium and best management practices. Yeah, the Valentes will accept, you know, a condition that they, I mean, they'll, they'll maintain and and follow the best management practices for the waste disposal. But they're not going to agree that that's going to be up to the Aquarian Water Company to decide whether they're meeting or not. So I'm not sure if I heard Keith correctly on that, the suggestion being in the discretion of Aquarian Water Company, but that that we won't accept. And we don't think it's necessary, it's probably illegal condition, so.
And we are following management practices, we've been and uh, and then they've been up here, read the letter from them, saying that they they're happy with what we're doing up here and that we're good neighbors.
I would say following the practices of the aquarium, not, we don't want them to object to.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, why isn't, I I agree with with uh, exactly the way Mr. Cody said it. And our attorney Cody said it, uh, perhaps they could just draw up their own best management practices and that's what they follow.
Well, that's fine, I'll do that.
Yeah, I I I think that's the best way to do it, then they're, and that's. Yeah, I, I, I think that's the best way to do it. Then they're, and that's the way this is normally done. That the owner drafts his own best management practices and, and you subscribe to those.
That's great.
Okay.
So I think the stipulation would be worded something like location of portable toilets for events and proper waste disposal practices. Shall be summarized and sent to staff for review.
I think that's fine.
That's fine.
So just because I'm, I'm, I'm looking at Mr. Valenti and I, I, I just want to make sure there's not confusion. I think what we're seeing is you, you write up some best practices. We'll send it to staff to review because, and then you're just going to follow your best practices. But staff has the right to review what you're putting down. Once, you know, when, once you've written it all out.
That's fine.
Okay.
Any other questions from the commission at this time? Chuck and Ryan, last chance, you have to talk on this application before we close the public hearing. Do you have any additional comments?
This is Chuck. No, Mr. Chairman, I'm fine.
This is Ryan. I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think Pete is here, is he? I haven't heard from him.
Uh, no.
No. Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing at this time?
Motion closed.
All in favor? Any discussion, excuse me? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve the application with the stipulations that we've discussed.
Second.
Uh, what, is this, this is just for the stipulations? Or what about the groundwater and the site plan? Three different motions, Keith?
Uh, well, it could be one motion that recognizes all those things. Could be a motion for both the groundwater protection permit and the site plan application with those three stipulations.
Three stipulations.
Let's, let's make the motion worded, worded that way.
Do I hear a second?
Second motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. It's a great spot out there, I tell you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commission.
You're welcome.
Thank, thank you very much and appreciate your time.
Can we move on to the next one, Mr. Chair?
Your turn, Ben.
Okay, the second part. PZ 2005 RA Alan Druin. Regulation text amendment application to remove accessory dwelling unit Requirement that any additions to an existing detached structure and/or any new construction shall not be located closer to the street than the primary dwelling unit.
Who presenting this application? Al?
I'm here. Well, I'm here.
Okay, you're, it's your application. We need to have your presentation on it.
Well, what I'm trying to do is change the zoning or delete a portion of the zoning. So we can put a house in front of an existing structure. As long as setbacks are proper. In my case, what I'm trying to do, my house is going to be 136 feet off the road. The, the new house. But it'll be in front of my old house because we're sitting in front, you know, the way our house is constructed right now. There's pictures in a pile if you look, you can see my house, what I'm talking about. And I'm trying to do an ADU in front of that house. Using the same driveway going up. And alls I'm asking is to have the section instantly deleted from the zoning. It'll also eliminate the loophole where I can build a garage and now convert it to a house later on without any commits at all.
So, so a question for you, sir. Why change the regulations for the entire town as opposed to just asking the zoning board of appeals for variance?
Because I looked around, like, here's a good example. I just took a picture of the zoning map. And that shows 100 lots in this town, which wouldn't make any difference if the house is in front or in back of that site. And then I guess DEP also came back and would recommend a house not be put on the waterfront side, but on the water side. So it affects a lot of lots in this town, not just mine.
Any other questions at this time?
Mr. Chairman, just one, one point of order. This is Chuck. The applicant makes a very, a very good point about, you know, its application to, to a lot of other areas in town, but we'd probably have to, have to at least look into that and, and see what some of those impacts are. And how this, you know, complies with the comprehensive plan unless Keith is, Keith has already done that. And, and the suggestion that he go for a variance, he, he meets all the criteria for the variance. He hasn't, he has a hardship related to the land. So, so it's one of the few cases where running variance application would actually have a hardship related to the land.
Yeah.
If expediency is his issue, you know, the variance might be the most expedient route. And, and if it's not, you know, then I think we should look into this for all the good reasons he gave us.
Uh, well, going back to my head, right? It's only on board of appeals days. The hardship is self-created. It is not. It was not because of the lands, because the way he created his hardship. So I don't know how that would go to ZPA. Lynn and Fred would back me up on that probably.
Well, I, I understand what you're saying, David, but I'm really hesitant to make a townwide
I am too.
Regulations for, for one property without at least having heard from the zoning board of appeal.
But I mean, we, I, I agree with what you're saying is we don't. You know, we, we created this accessory dwelling last year. I don't know when, when did we do it, Keith?
Uh, 2018, so.
2018. Well, no one's ever used it.
Well, people have used it. They just haven't done a complete freestanding complete freestanding building. They've done it in their houses. They've done it in over detached garages that already exist. But they haven't done something like this yet. Which would actually need a special use permit and architectural design review board review.
This is Ben. I'm a little hesitant of just nitpicking the whole amendment for this one, you know, striking the wordage of this one line. The president, other people coming on their hardship cases and trying to get worded, picking out of it.
I think there are other people who might want to speak.
I, 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 I'll get there Lynn. Does anyone else like to speak in favor of this application?
I would. Um, my name is Julia Leeming. I'm a resident of the town of Stonington. Recently, I've relocated from the borough to the town. I formerly was the chair of the planning and zoning commission for the borough of Stonington. I'm also an architect and I live at 175 Barnes Road right now temporarily. And will be building a house at 94 Farm Home Road. And I very much agree with Mr. Druin's recommendations. And I just would like to walk you through my, my thought process. Which is that section 7.1.1.8 is very stringent in, in its requirements, particularly for new construction to create an accessory dwelling unit. You're required to, to obtain a special use permit to require with, uh, comply with all of the bulk regulations of your district. To have a lot that is at least the size of the minimum lot requirement, if not greater. And also to go before the architectural design review board. So I think there are really great checks and balances built into this regulation. And the, the verbiage in point four, I think is unnecessarily restrictive. In point four, I think perhaps if you don't, if striking a whole section feels too, too too aggressive, I think you could really easily adjust the, the language just to eliminate and/or any new construction from point four. Because additions to existing detached structures, as Mr. Druin pointed out, don't have to have a special use permit. They don't have to go before the architectural design review board. So there, you don't have the same power over the site plan, which for new construction you do. And I think there are many instances, like Mr. Druin pointed out, where either because of topography or site conditions or problematic considerations, locating the accessory dwelling farther back from the road than the principal dwelling doesn't make any sense. And in my particular instance, I'd like to, I'm going to be building a, and a living in place dwelling for my parents who are aging. And for them to have to drive farther than I do or walk farther than I do from the parking makes no sense. We have a really thoughtful site plan, but the accessory dwelling makes the most sense closer to the road. And I will be going for a special use permit. I will be going for, before the architectural design review board because you wrote your zoning regs so thoughtfully. But I think, I don't think that, that you're any more protected by, by saying that new construction has to be behind the principal dwelling relative to the road than you would be if you let the other checks and balances do their job. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor of this application?
I have one other to say. If, if I'm, I can build a garage right now with a permit and come back in six months and convert it to an ADU. And now have to go through all special use process or any, or all the design review or anything else. I'm trying to do this right.
Is anyone opposed to this application? Any general comments on this application?
So everyone out there, don't forget to unmute your microphone if you are trying to talk.
Mr. Chairman, this is Chuck again. I, I do think the architect made some very good points. There, there are other protections in, in the zoning regulation which, uh, which, which would apply in virtually all cases. That, that gives the same protection that, that you have in this paragraph that's going to be eliminated. I, I, in listening, in listening to, you know, her thoughtful comments, I think, I think she offered a constructive, a constructive rebuttal.
Thank you Chuck. Anyone else? Keith?
Sure, so um, this goes back to the change that the, the town made to its accessory dwelling unit regulation back in 2018. Where the town sort of liberalized this a bit. Um, because 2018, the regulations were very restrictive about where someone could have an accessory dwelling unit. You needed a house of a certain age. You couldn't be on septic. Um, and there were rules like that that just sort of made it a little, uh, a little tougher to do for a lot of people. So this was liberalized a little bit in 2018. Since then, we've had about eight applications for accessory dwelling units. Looks like about four were in existing houses and four were in existing garage, garages. But none have been proposed like this before, where they're proposing building a brand new structure just for this purpose, which would need a special use permit and a visit to the architectural review board. So I mean, as far as the potential benefits to this, to this application, it does make it easier for some people who are looking to do this. Additional opportunity for moderately priced units with minimal impact. It removes the penalties, how to speak, for people like Mr. Druin who happen to have existing homes that are pushed back from the street. Um, who still can fit it on their lot without violating the front setback. And like Mr. Druin said, there is a potential loophole in the regulation where someone, because there's no age limit to the structure, your house, the structure doesn't need to be a certain age. You could build a garage, wait a year, and then apply to make the garage an accessory unit. The way the regs are written, potentially you could do it if you do it in that two-step process to get around the rule. And as far as the potential risks, I think the main one is probably just aesthetic concerns related to the disruption of any existing streetscapes. If there are streets somewhere where it would just plain look funny to have something like this in front of the house. There's some alternatives to this also, and Ms. Leeming mentioned one. Um, another one is to require doubling the district's minimum lot area to construct a detached accessory dwelling unit in front of a primary residence. That looks like it would still let Mr. Druin look, uh, do what he was looking to do. Or requiring double the district's minimum front setback to construct a detached accessory dwelling unit in front of a primary residence. Would still help Mr. Druin's case. I can't say how those would affect other people in town who might be wanting to do this. As far as the P O C D, which you need to look at in a regulation amendment, the P O C D is generally supportive of encouraging this sort of thing. Of course, it doesn't get this specific with this issue. But just in supporting accessory dwelling units and, and these sorts of things. As far as comments received, we get comments from DEP's Office of Long Island Sound Programs. They just say that on waterfront lots, our preference is to cite all buildings closer to the street line and further from flood zones and coastal high hazard areas to avoid flood damage to people and property. Um, the Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments didn't have any, um, didn't find that it would result in adverse intermunicipal impact, which is sort of the one thing that they looked at. Um, as far as the required actions here, there's a vote on decision of the applicant's conformance with the P, the 2015 P O C D. There's a decision on the applicant's conformance with the comprehensive plan, which is sort of the combination of the zoning regs and the zoning map. Which it seems like it doesn't have a real impact on that to change this specific rule. And the final thing, a decision on the actual regulation amendment itself. Um, and you can approve it as requested or deny it or approve it with modifications.
Is it out Keith? Is it out, Keith?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Do I hear, uh, a motion to close the public hearing?
No, moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Do I hear a motion on this application, please?
Well, to get the ball rolling, I make a motion to approve this with the, uh, this application with the regulation in mind before we tackle the P O C D and comprehensive plan. We'll go right to the regulation.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I'm sorry?
Go ahead, Lynn.
You know, I, I think that when the commission looked at the zoning for this, that we, we had concerns to in expanding the, um, the AUD. And, um, I think that some of the rationale is that not every lot is going to be suitable for, um, an ancillary dwelling unit. And, um, you know, I think that, uh, you know, changing a regulation for, for, uh, you know, one person's, um, property, uh, is, is not the way to go. I think that the history of use of the regulation over the last two years, you know, um, you know, we haven't had a lot of people come and try to, to, um, you know, work around the regulation as it is. I think that, you know, perhaps if we, the commission was going to consider anything, they should go back and do some homework and look at the properties in the town. And, um, you know, as someone mentioned, maybe there's 100 properties that could benefit from a change in the tax. But I think that's going to take some homework and I just don't think that the commission has the information to, to really make a tax changed at this point. You know, that, that's going to meet everybody's needs and the needs of the town.
Thank you, Lynn. Ben?
I was wondering if we should get more information from the zoning board of appeals as was mentioned earlier. Before making a decision on this.
I'm just not sure that that, that makes sense. I, I, I don't know, Ben, because, um, you know, I mean, the applicant can go to the planning, the board of appeals. The board of appeals is going to look at it on an individual basis and they're going to eat, anybody can go to the ZBA, right? So, you know, I would hate to say that we look, we went to the ZBA, the ZBA said, yeah, that's okay. And then the applicant goes to the ZBA and they, on that night, through more information, more discussion, said, no, it's not okay, or vice versa. I, I think we're two separate entities and I wouldn't want to base our decision on, on anything that the ZBA said.
Fair enough.
I agree. Anyone else have discussion? Fred?
Well, I'm, I'm back where I started. I am reluctant to make a, a change to the regulations for one property owner. If we had a a bunch of people who, who found an issue with the regulations as written, then I think we would have reason to consider changing the regulations. But I don't, uh, I'm, I'm really not in favor of changing them on the basis of, of one individual property. That's why we have a zoning board of appeals.
Right.
And, and I think if, if this were presented to them and they turned it down, then we might have a basis to change the regulations if we, if we, if we wish to do that. But I don't see the point of doing it now.
I, I agree with you, Fred. And it's, it's for the whole town, just not one person or one area.
It's not, or it's not 100 properties either. It's for all the properties.
Yeah, exactly.
And, and, you know, that's asking for trouble, I think.
You know, I think changing a regulation is a big deal and I think it needs to go through a thoughtful process. Um, and I think some really good points have been brought out through this discussion. Uh, you know, that perhaps, you know, we need to take back and think about, okay, do we need to look at this regulation based on some of the information that we talked about today? And maybe it should be tweaked, but I think it needs to be really a very thoughtful process. We don't want to go back and, oh, you know, two months from now, somebody else came up, another isolated instance. Maybe we need to just take the action to kind of look at it in a more holistic, uh, you know, point of view.
I, I, I agree, Lynn. And I think DEM, or, I don't know what was suggested. We should look at the lot sizes. If you're going to do it, you got to double the size of the frontage. I mean, there's all these other things we should put into it. If we're going to change it, that's what we should put into it.
Yeah, and I don't want us to try to do that on the fly, right? I think it needs to be thoughtful process. Yes.
Is this also smack of spot zoning? You think?
Well, it might not be, it could affect 100 people, but I think it is.
I mean, you know, I mean, that's the, that's the thing that I have. I mean, this is one thing for one person, which in my years of zoning school, planning and zoning school, um, sort of smacks of spot zoning, which is a bozo no-no.
Any other discussion? All the, uh, all those in favor of this motion say aye. All those opposed say, raise your hand or something. Say aye.
Opposed.
Opposed.
Motion is defeated. Any other business to come before the commission?